Thank you.
All right. We are recording this, this presentation. Okay, so we will. You're ready to? Candace? Okay. Then. Right. So we, we will begin and I want to welcome our audience out there in video land. And I'm, I'm so glad that all of you could attend today. This is the second part of the league's democracy working. In your community. And we're very pleased today to have a focus on the Woodland Joint Unified School District Board of Trustees. So. I am Pat Butler. I'm part of the Woodland League and I will be your moderator today. And it's my pleasure to be able to introduce the. Three newly elected. Trustees for the board and. I'm having trouble looking. And I will go ahead and welcome Noel Rodriguez, who represents just area four. Candace Richardson Fowler, who represents area five. And Viviana Garcia, who is representing area three. So welcome to all of you and we're so glad that you were able to come today.
Thank you.
It's our, the league's pleasure to be able to. Have this discussion with you and to in enjoy your responses. We are going to be a little bit on a tight timeline today, so. We, we will have each trustee answer the questions. Which they have had an opportunity to see. And then each, each question will be rotated so that. Everybody will have a chance to begin the discussion. And with that, we're going to move right along. Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to go first, please? Tell us about yourself. Tell us about you. And also what the motivation was for you to run for the board, for the school board.
Absolutely, and thank you for this invitation to participate in this forum. And you can hear me okay, everything, that's, that's good?
I can.
Okay, great. So my name is Noel Rodriguez and I have lived in Woodland since 2003. I graduated from UC Davis with a BA in Psychology in 1989. So I'm familiar with Yolo County since 1989. And I also have a master's in education from Sac State. I've been a director of youth programs over the years and have been a program manager. For Alameda County and Yolo County Social Service Programs. I've also served as an adjunct faculty for Sacramento City College. Where I designed educational programming for a learning tutoring center that helped matriculate students through Sacramento City College. Currently, I am working as an educational program manager with Rise Inc. And I also wear another hat in the city of Woodland and that is as president of the Woodland Public Library Board of Trustees. I sought office because I felt that I had the skills and the dedication necessary to offer to this particular position. And I felt that my skills would be utilized very well in this time of COVID. Including being able to understand the complexities of education. As it relates to other sectors that would impact decision making like employment and health issues as they relate to COVID impacts. I also felt that I wanted to try and focus on the issue of childhood literacy. And help increase the district's reading scores, which in turn would help to increase the math scores. Education has always been a theme of major interest in my life and the trustee position was one way to continue working on that interest.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we'll move along to Ms. Fowler. So can you tell us a little about you? And what motivated you to join the school board?
Okay, so I should let you guys know that I am also a special ed teacher and I work with Yolo County Office of Education. So a little bit about me is I'm originally from Southern California. I came up to Northern California to attend UC Davis. Graduated from my parents alma mater, which is Chapman University. Attended USC where I earned my masters in public administration. Now I am getting my masters in special education and another credential from Sac State. Transferring from Cal State Northridge. I'm a wife, I'm a mother of three amazingly challenging daughters. They make me be a better person by keeping me on my toes. And the reason I got involved with the school board is because with my husband and I both being teachers. We wanted to make sure that we got the best education for our daughters and didn't have to send them to a private school. You know, my mother graduated high school in 1974. And when she did that, she was able to practically graduate with her LBN. As well, because she was able to concurrently take classes at Compton Community College as well as Dominguez High School. And, and that was in 1974, so I'm striving to make sure we aim higher. And create policies within our district that retain our students. That we appropriately. Posify our programs, you know, our magnet programs or CTE programs or dual immersion programs, those sorts of things. And, and that we create pathways for success that are individualized. And so that they address all of the different learners that we have. One of the brilliant things that's coming out of this pandemic is we're learning that we have to have different academic streams for our students. Because not everybody learns the same way. And I think we're also going to come out of this valuing a different sort of education as well. Not just our A through G requirements, which are important. But social emotional learning is up there as well. Adaptability, perseverance, the arts, CTE, there's so many more components to education, so. Thank you guys for the time, thanks for having me here and. I always welcome feedback, so you guys have my contact information on the district website, it's my personal cell. So feel free to reach out to me at any time if you have thoughts or ideas or opinions.
Thank you very much, very, very informative. And we'll move along now to Ms. Garcia.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, hi, everybody, and thank you for inviting me. So my name is Viviana Garcia. I'm, I'm living in Goodland more than about fifteen years ago, so when I came here. I need to put a back into, I have a, I be in a school in Mexico. I have a degree in business administration, so once I came here in Goodland. I know in order I can help my kids, I need to know how this, the education system, system is worked. So I've been involved more than ten years in the schools. And that's what I motivate to seek for a, for a position in a board, in a school board. So I'm being involved more than ten years and I saw the needs. The students hats, the parents, the teachers and. And the staff, because I'm be inside to the classroom. So I have the opportunity also to be a subpar professional. And for migrant kids there, I see a lot of needs on our students. So that's why, that's why I'm motivated to do the plus. To be a role model for my kids and to give something to this community. The opportunity to all the families have the same opportunity for be successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was great, thank you. And now we will move to question number two and begin with you, Ms. Fowler. You represent area five. What do you identify as the concerns or issues facing your area?
So in being in district five, we have one school that is in our district and that would be Perry Elementary School. District five is one of the largest opt-out districts. For example, my kids go to Beamer Elementary School, all three of them. And one of the things that really I want to focus on is losing our students. So with district five being an opt-out district, we don't just see students not at quarry. We see students leaving the district as well. So I want to figure out why our students are leaving the district and how we can pull them back and accommodate those students. Because it's very important that our district is able to educate the students that live within the community. So that's one of my focus about area five is making sure that we are addressing. The educational needs of all of our students and not developing some sort of a cookie cutter solution.
All right, thank you. And now. Ms. Garcia. What, you represent district three. What are your concerns, your issues that you've been able to identify in particular to district three?
Yes, so my district, I have three schools, so it's a Gibson, Dingle and at the Douglas Middle School. So I didn't say before, I have a three kids, I have a three, one and a Pioneer High School. What sixteen, almost sixteen years old. And now also I have a Maximiliano who is a Beamer Elementary. And I have a little daughter who is Monse and is almost ready for the preschool. So my kids are being on Beamer, I mean Beamer, but before they go to Dingle and, and Gibson. And of course Douglas, so. My concerns in my area right now, I get a lot of emails and a lot of concern about. And this time specifically in the pandemic time, they're very concerned about the lost learning. And they're very concerned also to back two classes full time. But as a board member and at the same, all, all the other trustees. With our, we need, we want to the kids back to the, to the schools but ends and safe. So those are the more concerned right now on my area.
And Mr. Rodriguez, the same question. You represent area four. And what are the concerns, interests and the uniqueness of your particular area?
I think that I identify. You know, it's, it's not necessarily unique, but the commonality that we share throughout the district. I identify our districts below state level reading and math scores. Which is true generally speaking across the board with a few exceptions as major concerns. And especially as they are affecting low income, special needs, ELL slash Latino students. This is an area of deep concern to me. In my, and my areas include Knights Landing as well as. As well as Defoea School. And in Knights Landing, I think that we need to make sure that our rural areas are receiving equitable services, staying connected to the district. And being supported. And of course, I feel that COVID continues to be a big concern, especially as we move into new phases. And begin planning for a full return. We also need to make sure that we spend Measure Y funds wisely. The community has entrusted us with this responsibility by the passage of Measure Y. And as a trustee, I need to assure that the money is spent responsibly with an eye towards addressing critical needs.
Thank you, all of you. And we'll start with you, Ms. Garcia, for question number three. Woodland's district schools have recently reopened. What challenge do you identify for the remainder of this school year and into 2122?
So the students identify is a return to the classes in a safe way. And about trustee Rodriguez tell about the measure why? So there's the distribution of the resources. So the way that all the students have the same learning pursuit. Same learning access, access.
Thank you. Okay, and now we'll move on to Ms. Ms. Fowler for question number three.
Wouldn't. This year is a very interesting year. I mean, I think ad nauseam, we've been hearing, you know, unprecedented times, a year like no other. My big thing is data and rigor. Unfortunately, the executive team will hear this a lot from me when they're proposing what we're going to do to get back. And so the challenge is the learning loss, you know? I want to make sure we are challenging our students, but also addressing their social emotional learning. COVID has brought up a lot of things and for Woodland to be the food, food front of California. It's also highlighted some of the food insecurities in our community. So making sure that we sustain the food boxes that go out to the families as well as open lunches. And breakfasts at the, at the food dispensing location, those are very important. Making sure we get our summer academies solidified for summer school. In person, that is going to be a challenge, making sure everybody gets where they need to. A lot of our school sites are doing their own independent summer schools as well. So just making sure we get all that communication and information to the parents. In a way that they can make a timely decision for their summer school plans. And then for the 2122 school year. I know that district countywide, all of the super tendents are working really hard. To try and set up that virtual learning academy. There are a lot of students that are medically vulnerable and fragile. That will not be able to return back to in-person learning. And as we understand, the governor's executive order has a sunset. So we will not be able to do hybrid learning or distance learning unless we set up our own virtual academies. So seeing that come to fruition is a challenge that we have for 2122. As we are already at the end of April heading into May. And then just for everybody, getting back into a routine. Getting back into that routine of going to bed at a certain time, getting up, getting out of your house, going to school. And the new level of rigor addressing the learning loss. Yes, I know for me and my district, I teach in Washington Unified through Yolo County Office of Ed. We've got thirty-two more days, so I don't see that we're going to establish any concrete, concrete routines in the thirty-two days we have here. Or the seven weeks we've got with Woodland. So summer is going to be a chance to kind of rev and practice that, but when we hit fall. That, that routine is going to be a challenge for a lot. I know my kids are still virtual because of our schedule. So we're going to practice in the summer and hit the ground running in the fall, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And moving on to Mr. Rodriguez to question number three. Um, Woodland School Districts have recently reopened. What are the challenges that you identify for the school district for the remainder of this year and on into 2020, 2122?
There's definitely no shortage of challenges, that's for sure. The current challenge before us is to continue to be vigilant in regards to COVID and implement our plan to bring students and staff back safely. The COVID situation continues to be fluid and every time COVID affects the community, the district has to adjust. We will more than likely, as Candace was saying, need to implement a virtual academy. To create ancillary educational programming for those students who will want to be at home as we move into the fall or. Who are sent home because of COVID. Also providing supports and mental health programming to help our return to school and support students with anxiety around being back at school. Or just dealing with the effects of COVID academically and mentally. And also trying to keep in mind that our teachers and parents may need this type of support as well. Spending funds wisely, we already talked a little bit about that, but when we get COVID relief funds, it's important to be able to spend those monies. In a way that addresses our critical needs. For example, we need to address the digital divide. We need to address learning gaps that have widened because of COVID. Make sure our teachers and staff are being supported and appreciated for all their hard work and sacrifices. Many, many challenges. I think that one of the things that we need to do as, has often been said. As a comment in regards to COVID is we are kind of learning to fly the plane as we build it. And we found ourselves in that situation quite a bit. So we also need to learn as we go from the things that we could have done better and adjust our programming along the way. And so those are a few, just a few of the challenges.
Lots of challenges. Um, I think we'll continue with you, Mr. Rodriguez, for question number four. What do you see as a school district's role in assisting students who have been most impacted by the pandemic?
I think our role is to make sure that we're in contact with those students and families who are struggling. And offer them supports, whether it be academically or mental health or in any other way. Also, this includes a robust summer of programming that we're planning. That will allow for helping students to catch up on learning loss and participate socially with their peers. I think we have, must act as an institution, you know, together in utilizing data, which Candace also mentioned earlier. And creating programming that addresses the needs of those most impacted by the pandemic. And in that light, I think we have to build bridges and work closer than ever. With our colleagues in the city council at YCOE and the board of supervisors to make sure we are utilizing all our resources. To help our students and families. Very often, you know, you, when folks have tried to work together, you hear the term stay in your lane, stay in your lane. You know, you do this and we do that. But I think if anything, COVID has really been able to shed light on things that we can do together. As institutions here locally to be able to address the needs of our students and our families.
Thank you, thank you. And moving on to Ms. Garcia. Question number four. What do you, what do you see as the school district's role in assisting students who have been most impacted by the pandemic?
So for me, the first thing they need, the school need to identify those students to most affected by the COVID. After provide additional tutoring or resources that the most affected students. Are, and have given the access. And give it, tell the parents information. Informant about the options they have. About their resources. And finally, monitoring the progress of these students. In order we can ensure those kids have the same opportunity and possibilities to, to access to higher education.
All right. Ms. Fowler. Number four, what do you see as a district's role in assisting students who have been most impacted by the pandemic?
Always thought of the school district as a form of a conduit or even a connector. A resource for the, the families and, and the community to connect them together. To be a hinge for wraparound services. With our teachers often being case managers, they are. Often in the role of first responders. I noticed something is happening here, how can we help this person? Providing resources and whatnot. We can only control so much. And this pandemic, we have as a district been able to bolster what we can do. For the first time, the district has been handing out food boxes to handle our food insecurities. Mobile hotspots for the internet deserts that we've had in our community. We also will need to look at what's going on with our rural foster youth, adopted kids, our homeless population. And do some really intense case management. At one of our district meetings, they brought up for numbers of the kids that were not. Projected to graduate at the end of this term. And a lot of the numbers were broken down by race and socioeconomic information. And I asked the executive team if they could dig a little bit deeper. Because the success of our students was not just based on socioeconomics or race, there were so many other factors. And when we just highlight the race and socioeconomic, we're not getting to the root of how we can fix things. We can't do anything about race or socioeconomics, but food insecurity, yes, we can address that. Learning loss and, and internet deserts, we can actually have a solution for that. So the more information we get, the more targeted solutions that we can have to be more effective. Making the appropriate partnerships with folks like Community Communicator for counseling and whatnot, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Garcia, we'll start with you for question number five. Parents have been justifiably conflicted about to or not to send their students back to school. What do you think is, as, what do you see as the board's role in addressing this dilemma?
So this dilemma is, I, I, for the firsthand, I have the same. I think the formation is, is a key to keep their parents informed about the option they have. And also have the open communication with the school administrators. And to have, to give to us all the question to them, because they're the best, the best. The source to give it those answers.
Okay, and Ms. Fowler, the same question for you. Parents are justifiably conflicted about to or not to send their students back to school. What do you see as the board's role in addressing this dilemma?
Well, I completely understand as a trustee, we've been getting information and comments from both sides. And we, we of course can't make everybody happy, we can just do and make the best decisions based on the information we have. I'm coming from a medical family, my mother is a doctor of nursing. I, if I'm saying in 2020 that I'm going to trust the science, then I'm going to trust the science in 2021. I'm going to research, go to the experts and see. What are our parameters that we're working with it? That being done, then we can just tell the parents the information, hey, this is what we've done, this is the safety precautions. If you feel comfortable with what we've done, feel free to bring your kids on, this is what we're offering. If you don't feel comfortable just yet, keep your kids at home, this is another solution that we're offering. But I think the crux of the matter is the information that we have available and trusting in that information. To help our parents come up with a solid solution.
Right, Mr. Rodriguez. Parents have been justifiably conflicted about to or not to send their, to their students back to school. What do you see as the board's role in addressing this dilemma?
I think the board's role is to make decisions based on science and facts. To be transparent, to be as timely as possible in making decisions. And to make sure our parents know what to expect from the district so that they can make their decisions. I think. Our role is also to check in with our stakeholders, our parents, our staff, our teachers. And to act in accordance with county health officials to have a safe environment for our students and teachers to be successful in school and on campus. And also if we, if we need to continue virtual, virtual education, then we need to make sure that it's as effective as possible. So that the parents can feel a measure of confidence in that. You know, if we still have to choose between two different options, that each option is just as strong as possible in educating their students.
Thank you. Start with you, Ms. Fowler, for the next question. Early. You talked about issues and concerns in your area number five. What would you like to tackle first? And what measures do you think the district should take if necessary to address this issue?
I've actually been talking with the executive team about this, so I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it a little bit more. One of the things that I really love sharing about Woodland is that we were the first school district on, in, on the west coast. To have dual immersion school programming. What you see in other districts like Pasadena, Napa Valley, they've reclassified those programs as magnet schools. And you see an increase in test scores when kids are classified appropriately. And they are given the proper incentive and. Titles and told the kids, yeah, you are in a special program, you know? It's kind of empowering for our students. And then I started looking at what other of our programs are magnet and how can we address some of these students who are leaving our district? And why are they leaving the district? What programs are not being offered in Woodland that are enticing our students away? And of course, that is my focus because my district sees the most opt-out as we only have that one school, Prairie Elementary School. Uh, sees the most opt out as we only have that one school Prairie Elementary School. So I would like to see why we are having students leave the district, whether it's for Woodland Christian, which we understand during the pandemic. They were in person and we weren't in person yet because there's different rules for private school as there are for public. Um, but I would like to address why we're losing students and how we can retain them and then elevate what we're doing already.
And Ms. Garcia. You started, Mr. Rodriguez, you want to finish with this?
Sure, yes, of course. Uh, I think. What we tackle first, I think we're, we're currently conducting what is essentially, uh, a priority exercise where we are trying to identify priorities. That should be addressed first, uh, as, as a board and, uh, as our, uh, along with our other partners, uh, in the district. And so as we. So I think what needs to happen is that we do exactly what we're doing is to identify, uh, our priorities, uh, with, uh, input from our stakeholders. And. The, the specific areas for me that are most important are addressing the academic losses occurred because of COVID. And, um, making sure that we have mental health supports, uh, available for our students. Uh, for our families if they need be as we make this transition back to, um, to, uh, full time in school. And I, I think academic loss and mental health are, are keys to being able to be able to then go on and take on the, the other priorities that we are currently trying to identify.
And we'll start with Ms. Fowler. What are your own personal goals for the remainder of your term on the board?
That's a, that's a big one considering I'm only four months into a four year term. But I want to make sure that I continue to reach out to each site annually. I have six more schools to reach out to in talking to their principal. I want to attend the school site council meetings. Elike, uh, ELAC meetings, PTA meetings, so I can get a sense of what each school's culture is. And how I could be of service to each of those schools. And I came, I campaigned on the premise of we can do better and we can aim higher. Um, I don't believe that Woodland Joint Unified is telling our story the best that they can, so I would love to see a communications officer. Um, in our district so that they can help highlight our successes. Um, some of the most, um, successful districts, like the one that I grew up in Los Alamitos Unified School District. Uh, which has a plethora of blue ribbon schools. They are so revered because they market and they brand theirselves. Um, you know, and I think that we don't do a good job of marketing ourselves as a district or branding or telling our own story. So I would just like to see us aim higher and as we have our continued successes, that we highlight that and, and we share that with others.
Mr. Rodriguez, what are your personal goals and what will you focus on during the remainder of your term?
Well, I think that the number one goal in order to be, um. To, to be able to address all of the challenging issues we have is effective, respectful communication between board members. Uh, staff, superintendent, parents and teachers. That we have quality conversations on priorities with an end result being, uh, to make the best quality policy, policy decisions that we can. Uh, with diverse input from our stakeholders being considered. I think I would like to see an effective process to address the learning gap, which has, uh, undoubtedly widened, uh, as we've gone through COVID. And as I had mentioned earlier, um, I'm interested in seeing us raise our reading scores through systematic adjustments. And I, I also think that supporting students' mental health, uh, and our stakeholders' mental health as well, meaning our teachers and our families. That, uh, that, that can't be overemphasized enough because I think systematically mental health. You know, as we start looking at these issues and challenges, um, they kind of all organize into, uh, into what has generally been taken on as a school district before COVID. Right, they had, we had all the similar concerns, but mental health may not have been one of them that, uh, that is readily apparent. Uh, and so because of COVID and, uh, how things have happened, the isolation, uh, illnesses that families have had to deal with. Um, I think mental health now elevates itself, uh, in regards to, you know, being just as important as, uh, the school counseling, uh, mathematics. Your reading scores, um, me- mental health is going to be an important part of being able to return to, uh, to a better place. I'm not, I won't say normal, to a better place than we were, uh, previous to COVID.
Being an old mental health person myself, I think that, that I can, I conclude that's a very important piece that's going to be so, so available. And so, so readily needed in the schools as well as many other parts of our community. Thank you, and I'm moving on to Ms. Garcia. What are your personal goals for the remainder of your term?
Yes, as I mentioned before, uh, my introduction, so I mentioned I've been able to be on the, on the classrooms. And for me, uh, mental health is, is priority. For all the, for all our students and families. So I, I agree with that trustee Rodriguez. And, uh, this has been my must to be, um, to apply to this position, to run for this position. So give it the, the access to families and students the way they are able to. To learn. And also another, uh, goal for me is empower the families. And absolutely before pandem- this pandemic, uh. Give it the resources to our most affected students. And their least, we're not the last. Make a bridge in communication, open communication between, uh, families and the school district. Is a must to, and the order we need, uh, to hear from them, the needs they have in order we decide how can we. Use our, our cover funds and also our, about measure way. Thank you.
Right. I'm glad that you two are an advocate for mental health services. Um, I think we have time for one more question and it's kind of developed from listening to your responses. Um, we talked about the challenges that are going to be facing the school board in the next years to come. What do you think should be the priority for, of challenges that the board should address? Mr. Rodriguez, could you start that?
Yes, uh. I think. I can, I'll definitely give you a priority, but I think there's so many, so many challenges, they really have to look at it, you know, uh, in terms of, uh. Of how are we going to move forward to address all the pieces of the pie, but I will give you, uh, again, uh, that I think that. When you look at our. At our test scores, at our state test scores. And you look at all, all our grammar schools, you look at, uh, our middle schools and our high schools. Um, there, there is no denying that, um, you know. In most cases, our schools are falling below reading level and, and below math level. Uh, and that has to be addressed fundamentally, right? That, that is the basis of your education. Uh, and we have to be able to increase those scores, meet state levels, um, and, and do as well as we can. And, and you know, when you look at, when you look at the high school level. You see, uh, that the English language acquisition scores actually improve, uh, in, in both. Uh, but what does not improve are the math scores. Uh, and, and, and that's why part of what is really important to me is to raise our reading levels because that's, that's your first. That's the first, um, component of how you're able to take on, uh, math issues, math problems. If you can't read or you're having trouble difficulty reading, then it's hard to move on in complexity in math. And I think those, we can see that very clearly, uh, in our state scores and not just in this year or last year, but as you go back many several years. And I, I truly believe that fundamentally, we've got to be able to improve, uh, that situation. We've got to look at it systematically. Uh, we're, we're gonna need to make adjustments. It's important, not just for our students, it's important for our community.
Okay, so. And Ms. Garcia. We talked about the challenges that are going to be facing the school board in, into the next few years. What are the priority challenges that you hope that the board should address?
So after being involved more than ten years as a mom. I've been seeing the, and impact for the information has on the parents. For, when the parents have the formation, they, they know what are the options for them. And, and if you the communication with administrators and, and the teachers is key also. So as a board member, I would like to keep this open communication. Uh, between all the district to their families. Or they, they know the options and they, they know where they can go to ask the question or to ask for help, for help. So that's for me is the most important and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that question to you, Ms. Ms. Fowler, we talked about the challenges that are going to be facing the school board in the next many years. And what are the priorities that you feel that the board should be addressing?
Um, so I'm going to be a little Pollyanna-ish here and basic and say that cohesion and making sure we're all on the same page. Is going to be so essential to moving this machine forward. I say that because, um. You know, we got a public comment that said, what about as parents, you know, the, the teachers have the teachers' union. And the board, you know, I, I thought they were kind of for us, but we need a voice as well. And one of the things we've been talking about is a parent advisory committee and a teacher advisory committee. Because even the teachers' union, W E A, doesn't speak for all the teachers. We want to bring everybody to the table so that they can feel that they have a say and have a say with teeth. Um, a say that is going to mean something. Um, just making sure we all have buy-in and that we realize that we're in this together. And in order to move this machine forward, we're all going to have to do some heavy lifting. Um, you know, we've got the mental health component. I really want to see a lot of rigor. Uh, the, we all vote different ways on our, our school board. But one of the things that we have in common is that we have a mutual respect for one another. Um, in one vote, I was a dissenting vote and I wanted to go another direction than the entire board. Um, and all other six board members respected me for the choice that I made, just as I respected them. We need to get back to that with the cohesion. We have some parents who don't want school to open. We have another group that do want school to open. Some teachers are okay with concurrents, some are not. We all are going to have to get on the same page and figure out what heavy lifting are we going to do to make sure we can all move this forward? So that's one of my first priorities.
Thank you. I think we'll just stay with you, Ms. Fowler, and closing remarks that you would like to make to the group, to your audience?
Um, well, I have to say, I, it is an honor and a treat to be on the school board. Uh, a couple of times a month, I check in with both our board president and Tom and. You know, this is a difficult time. Who runs for election during a pandemic? Um, knocking on doors with masks on, I mean, that person really wants to do the work. And that's why all three of us are here, so I'm just happy. Um, I'm only as good as the information that I have, so. I, I implore folks to reach out to me and let me know what they're thinking, what they're feeling. And if they're interested into something, let me know. Let's both roll up our sleeves and get to work. Um, my goal is not just to make this the best district for my three girls, but to make this the best district. Uh, for all of our kids. I want graduating from Woodland Joint Unified School District to mean something. When they go to other schools, whether it's Woodland Community, Saks State, Davis. Oh, you know, that's a, that's a Woodland alum. That's going to mean something, so, um. If you guys are interested in working with me to bring that to fruition, uh, let me know.
Thank you. And you, Ms. Garcia, what are your closing remarks?
Yes, I want to say. Okay, so for me, it's honor to be here after being a, involved in different kind of a committees. And also, and that's for me is, is a, I, I wanted to give it to all those families, all those parents. That. If I can be here, anyone can be here. So I want to be a role model for my kids, what role model for my older students and the parents. And they say, there's no limits to be a part of the change of your community because I love Goodland. I love being here and in order we have a better education, we need to be involved. And that's my closing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Rodriguez, what, what would your closing remarks be?
Uh, well, I just want to thank, uh, the League Women voters for, uh, having this forum, for allowing us to, uh, be able to connect with our community in a different way. I also, uh, want to, um, remark that, you know, it has been challenging. Uh, challenging for, as a board as a whole, we've got three new board members, you know, that's, that's quite a, uh, big characteristic shift. Um, uh, when you're trying to work together, um, to create policy. Uh, but I, I think that, um, the community, uh, should be, um, uh, should be, uh. Should know that, uh, as, as board members, we actually work really well together and we really respect each other. And we really try very hard to understand all different, uh, aspects of, of issues from all our different constituencies. Uh, and I have a great deal of respect for all our board members. Uh, we have been, I think, um, we've probably gotten the most emails, probably, my, my bet would be than any other board, uh, in history. And I think that, um, you know, some, some, uh, certainly have, uh, had a lot of criticisms about, uh, the choices that were made. Uh, and, um, but I welcome them and I think all my colleagues, uh, welcome, um. Uh, the voice of the community, whether it be parents, uh, whether it be students themselves who have wrote, written us, whether it be the teachers. Um, because it all matters. Um, that doesn't mean that we may make a decision that, uh, everybody agrees with. But the fact that I know when I say that the voice of the community matters to us. That I, that I can look at all of my trustee colleagues and I know that's true for each and every one of them. That's an important, uh, base in order for us to be able to move forward with the community. To build the best possible system of education that we can. And I'm confident, you know, since we get past this COVID, uh, time, uh, and, and learn, and learned the lessons from COVID. Um, and, and in some ways, uh, there are silver linings to COVID in that there are additional monies and we're able to possibly do things that. We might not have been able to do otherwise, uh, but to learn the lessons and to, uh, make sure that, uh, we're, we're always connected to the community. Uh, I think those are important things and I, I want the community to know that, um, that, um, we, we are listening to you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all very much. This concludes the formal part of our presentation of our event today. And we want to really thank each and every one of you for your insights and information that you brought to, to for today. I for one am feeling very fortunate that if you all, if we have members like you on our school board, we will be able to move on well. And. I'm glad too that, um, we've been able to do this whole presentation in conjunction with the, um. The board and with the superintendent's office. So I guess I would like to thank you very much for being here. I'd like to thank our audience for being here today. Because it makes it. A good presentation to know that you are enjoying what you're hearing today. And, um, also to thank Naomi from the superintendent's office for providing the IT support, most, most appreciated. And we're going to be having our concluding part of the series on May nineteenth. That is another Wednesday at twelve noon. And the focus of that presentation will be on the three most recent individuals that have come on to our city council. That's the Woodland City Council, of course. And, um, as one of you mentioned, it's always good to be working with all of the, the other individuals who. Are the leaders in our community. So thank you all for very, very much again for being here. And that concludes our, our day. Thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good day, everyone. Thank you.
I thank you.
Hey, thank you, and, um. Again, if there's anybody left in the audience, they- And again, if there's anybody left in the audience, thank you all for being here.